Everybody, we're starting a meeting. Hi, this morning, we've been in closed session, so we've been a little late getting out, we apologize. But anyway, we welcome you all here today, and our presenter right now that just walked in is Richard Williams. So, Richard, go ahead.
Yeah, so what this is about is addressing the Weaver, essentially, the issue of water. And Weaver County for residents, for constituents and businesses. As you're well aware, Weaver County Basin and Pineview are the ones that supply water in these particular areas. And so the question, so what happened recently is that we've gotten delays relative to last year in terms of the water. Weaver Basin will not have water available for landscaping secondary until the middle of this month.
Fifteen?
Fifteenth of this month.
Right.
And Pineview were supposed to start today. The second. And so, um, also there are restrictions in terms of when you can water, how many times you can water.
Right.
A day. And there's a limitation, especially under Weaver, on how many contracts it reduced forty percent on irrigation, seventy percent on landscaping, ten percent on. And so the question is, what can we do? Are there supplementary sources of water? And there are. When the weather gets warmer, they're going to be air conditioners, and air conditioners are basically ubiquitous. The air conditioners are going to produce condensate. And the condensate currently, right now, goes down a condensate line, and it's generally not used. I submitted a.
Generally, it goes into the, your wastewater.
That's right. And but that condensate is really good water, that condensate is newly condensed water that is classified by EPA as the stowed water. So what you can do with that, what this still water, is to accumulate it and then figure out what your purpose is. If you're looking for irrigation, or if you're looking for landscaping, the question is, how much water do you need? How long are you gonna pump? And then are you gonna pump it out to that particular water? We have people who are well versed in that, we've got landscape people.
Who's weak? Are you representing somebody?
Oh, no, just me, I'm just saying, in the county, I mean, there are people here that are capable of doing that.
Well, so, uh, condensate water is acidic, you have a little acid in it when it gets created.
Uh, condensate water, you can check what the, what the pH is on that, whatever.
Yeah, now, I don't know, but I've never asked or cared enough to see if it was enough to harm a plant, I don't think it is.
The question of what your pH is gonna be determined by what your soil is, what your soil should be. And so when you get the condensate water, the prudent thing to do would be to get a pH test of your soil and figure out what that is, and then try and add whatever pH would be needed.
So, you're, you're thinking would, you would store that condensate in a tank?
That's correct.
And then use it to?
That's correct.
And most times when you do that, they would, they would mix that with the secondary source, or even the primary source, if it was a house.
Are they doing that now anywhere?
No.
You're the plumber.
No. They, uh, you, they do store rainwater, that's prevalent, you have rain buckets at your gutters, you have rain storage, you can buy, uh, right now, we sell, we sell eleven hundred gallon tank that is about two feet wide and about six feet tall.
That's legal now.
Uh, that's legal, you can, you can store up to twenty-five hundred gallons in the state. So, yeah, you, you could harvest rainwater to twenty-five hundred gallons and, and just, you could put this right in the same tank.
You could do the same thing in that tank.
Wouldn't hurt at all.
That's correct, that would be the same thing, the question is, is that looking from an outside tank? I'm always concerned about safety, you know, as opposed to something underground.
Yeah.
That's, that's the.
The tank I was talking about isn't outside, yeah.
Yeah, we're looking at, and I was reading on the internet, and there's a thing, water enemy of buildings. And just like water, it's so hard to control, it's so difficult to control. And it's something that you don't want to have run around free, and having something outside with that amount gives a lot of consternation, if it stands around and like, your conditioner's standing water. Legionella, Legionella, the thing that came, that Legionnaires' disease.
Yeah, Legionnaires.
Yeah, Legionnaires, that was water, conditioning water. I was in Philadelphia town going to school, that's where that came from, and if you leave standing water around, certain mosquitoes and things like that are there, so my thought is, is that the safest thing to do is to not have it on top of the ground. It's just, this is what my thought is.
Probably the safest, now, with that added cost, right?
So is there something you're asking us, you think we should do in the county?
I think, yes, I am.
Okay, what would that be?
I think, I think one, you've got different kinds of constituents here, you've got residents who are out in your county. And residents who are now facing these restrictions, probably the most vulnerable one is saying, look, they're being asked not to plant new plantings. They're asked not to plant new grass, they're asked to irrigate, they're asked not to defer.
Maybe they're all being asked to, uh, wait to start their lawns till next year?
Yeah.
All the new homes this year, they're saying, look, just don't plant this year.
And this is, uh, this is a big thing. Um, I've been out places because I've worked as part of road construction crews out in county, I've met people out there.
Alright.
There are, it's very important for the landscape to have the yard, so to them, a home is not just a home, it's not just a building, it's a yard. It's a yard where you have animals, it's a yard where you have horses, it's a yard where you have wildlife, they're invited to come there. So some of the programs that we have here, for instance, you, you exchange, you take a piece of turf off, that's not what people wanna do, people wanna have their horses be able to go and eat the natural grass. Instead of try hay or whatever they've been eating from the summer. And this is kind of, so you want a program that works with people, instead of something that stops them from doing what they wanna do. Especially older people like myself who get in a habit of doing things, and we don't like to change habits. So my thought is, is how can we, how can a county assist them? How can the county say, look, this is what we're trying to do, we're trying to save water, but we also want you to encourage you to use the water that you have, which is the water from the condensate. Alright, so there's a, I think there's a need for an education program on that base level. This is for just looking at a person who's got a house outside, doesn't have any other structures. For the person who has a house and outside is a farmer or a rancher, there's even more information that's there. There are things called cooling towers and condensers, with cooling towers and condensers, you have an exchange of hot and cold water, then you've got a venting out to the outside air, and that frequently causes condensate, uh, evaporation water that can be collected. So the question is, is that can you collect that evaporation water in addition to the water that you would normally get from your conditioning system? There are air conditioning systems and things like silos, and sometimes in barns. So this would give the home, a person, a farmer or irrigator more than one situs from which to provide water, so the barn is not close to the house, the silo is not close to the house, you could run something from there to these different places to meet that water need. Um, the existing option for the homeowners is using this gray water, and gray water, actually, I looked on the internet, there's no HVAC company that is advertising that has expertise in gray water in this area. Actually, the gray water regulations came from Moab, the ones that I've said, and it came, and they're only, they're there basically for a ground level, for something with no slope at all. Which is not, which is not the situation here.
So the state of Utah did put gray water restrictions in a couple of years ago, so we do have them at a state level, uh, gray water.
That's right.
But one of the, there's no question, gray water, you have to be very careful with gray water because, uh, there, yeah, you know, if any of your waste gets in there. Yeah, you know, gray water, and you don't want kids drinking it, and then if you do use gray water, you wanna make sure the detergents and soaps you use are very friendly to plants, which you can do, it's, it's, this is not hard to do. Uh, it's just a matter of doing it. But, uh, you know, as hard as we do, our wastewater, after it's treated, all it ends out to the lake, right? And the lake needs water right now, too, right?
Well, the, uh, lake, not only the lake, I mean, my background is in, very quickly, I was a research analyst, and I wrote a report on water two thousand and six, way back then. And based a lot upon research done by a hydrological institute in Saint Petersburg, Russia, the UN commissioned them to do a research report. And back then, we had things based on predictions based upon lack of water, and based on essentially more water going to the atmosphere versus staying in the water, and they've had, um, our problem in the United States was not really manifested as much as the problem in China, where I lived for six years, in Thailand. I've been in places where there are really acute shortages of water. But back to what I want the county to do, is I want to envision the users that you've got here. You've got the residential user who's got an AC, and you've got a residential user that can take the water from the condensate line, put it in a tank, and then figure out what they wanna do with it, how, this is where you're gonna need supply, and you can do that in conjunction with the existing water, that resource that you're getting from the basin. If you're getting from the basin, if you're getting from the pipe, whoever you're getting it from. They can plan in advance to do that, I think that would be a great educational thing to figure out how to, how to do that. Because we wanna help people to enjoy their lives here in this county, and enjoy means just not for them, but for their animals, their extended family, you know, that they bring here, too. The second issue is, um, on the, on the, for the farmer and for the, uh, for the rancher. You have more opportunities there to harvest water, the more buildings you have, because buildings are places where they collect water, and they collect water where places where you don't intend to collect water. And so now, instead of having water being perpetual nuisance, either eroding your foundations, going something or causing disease by going too much into plants, because when water is too much water, there's disease for plants. Let us harvest this water for these commercial buildings and spread them out and pump them where we need them. And we need a program there, then finally, or not finally, but.
So why are on there?
Yes, that's against the law.
With, that what you just said, about being able to harvest the water off of, uh, your sidewalks and impervious water, when, when it runs down to the drain, you no longer own it or have control of it, and you can, uh, Mark, Mark Miller Subaru, he wanted to, uh, catch his excess water, you know, the Subaru dealer, he had like fifteen acres of, uh, yeah, yeah, and he wanted to harvest that and do what, uh, Richard here is talking about, and the, uh, local building inspector wouldn't allow him to do it, and he comes to the legislature, and that's when we got into rainwater harvesting.
Yeah.
And then we set that limit at twenty-five hundred gallons.
Yeah, before that, they should have, they wouldn't even allow us to do rain buckets, right?
No, no, not even a fifty-five gallon rain bucket.
I don't wanna harvest off the sidewalks, the things that would be considered stormwater, me with the, you serve that stormwater, surface water, that kind of stuff. What I wanna do is.
Surface water, when it moves, goes to storm.
Um, but I'm just thinking about, see what happens when you have a, a condenser? Probably talk.
No, no, a condenser, I do.
When, when you, when you've got a condenser, you've come out there and you've got a, certainly that kind of stuff, that evaporated water. That's, that's not on the surface, that's something that.
Right, and you have a right to that, but you just switched, you were talking about number two, you said.
Oh, number two, number two is in the terms of the class of customers, the class of classic people here. See, the first was the residential folks who don't have any, and the second is people who have condensers, you could have a condenser in the silo, you could have a air conditioner in a barn, you can have that, so that's the second class. The third group are people who are running, or now thinking about governmental buildings, and the commercial buildings. I was at a building here in, working a building in the city, not in the county. And it was a school at thirty-four grammar school, so I talked to the person, the ATC, HVAC, oil system. He said, no, we're not using the condensate. Now, what happens in closed loop systems is that three percent, a rule of thumb, is used, used up, you need makeup water for that system.
Right.
So the question is, is that are we, is the county actually using that kind of makeup water, the county says, to make up the difference for the water that's evaporated in a closed loop system? So that, because then, and, so that's, that's my third, third issue in terms of looking at what that, um, the, uh, next issue is in terms of looking at supplemental sources that come out of things that would be more industrial origin. One of the byproducts of combustion is H2O, any hydrocarbon that you put out there, yeah, oil, natural gas, syn gas, anything like that has water come out of it, it's mixed in with the balloon, stuff coming out of the flue. So the question is, do we have opportunities there in terms of trying to encourage recycling of that water? And that would be something kind of on a legislative changes, or in terms of the local ordinance or something like that, to try and promote recapturing the water from some kind of facility like that. Uh, there's, you have a question?
Sir, yes, sir. Uh, do you have a cost per gallon, what these things cost to harvest? There is, because when, when I, as I've sit here and listen, a lot of these are great ideas, but the cost per gallon, gallon to harvest seems like it'd be really expensive.
I think it's an excellent question, so what I did was start with what's called a low hanging fruit. The low hanging fruit is the first class of customers, the water coming out of the air conditioner, dripping out of the condensate line. That's.
You're already collecting it.
You're already collecting it, and you're not putting any, any heat in that.
Yeah.
So the, the next thing is in terms of the second class of customers, which we quote, which would be the second class of constituents, would be those who have farms and ranches. That's a little bit more, because you've got more buildings out there. The third I'm raising, and so now I'm moving up, so yes, cost is incidentally, so you need more of a professional kind of evaluation as to what is the cost benefit for that, that's exactly correct. But the, uh, the idea what we're doing right now is we are in a situation where we are realizing that this water that we have in our, in the West is just not what we thought in terms of availability, and we have to move to figure out where can we get the water cheaply? If we can't, I'll get it from the surface, and can't get it from the snow, what other places can we get it? So that's where, where we're at, and so, uh, I'm raising this to you because I've worked in this field. And so I'm looking at, I'm raising these opportunities to give us to be informational, to help you put that in there.
Yeah, or should we appreciate this, so you know, uh, water law in the state is, uh, done at a state level, right? So they're the ones that make the water law, the people who enforce the water law are the districts who will do. So we don't enforce water law at the county. You're not asking something we couldn't do here, because he's asking for an information.
Right.
Uh, push, I'd prefer that to go to the people who, uh, who enforce water law, that's what the districts, but he's not asking for something we couldn't do, it's just cost of money.
No, I would, have you had any conversations with the state? I mean, we just had a presentation by the speaker just last week, yeah, they put hundreds of millions of dollars into programs for water conservation, understanding that if we're in a concern, if we're gonna increase our water supply, seventy percent has to come from conservation, so I think you're headed the right direction.
I've had conversations.
But what I would, what I would say is this, right now, there's money available from the state, from education, all the way through. This one needs to be a state issue, and then, because the state has control over, basically, you know, I shouldn't say control, but relationships with Weaver Basin, Pineview. They can enforce it.
Yes, I have had conversations with the state.
Who, who with?
I've talked to the Department of, uh, Natural Resources.
And water quality.
Natural, we, oh, natural resources, essentially what, uh, my recommendations have been in terms of atmospheric water generation.
Uh huh, sure.
Not only that, reducing the amount of evaporation of water.
Yeah.
We don't have any appropriation for that in the state. None, there's none, our neighboring states and our neighboring entities have done this.
Who?
Well, Arizona, state of Arizona.
What do they do?
This is what state Arizona does, state of Arizona's been taking the water that's coming from the Colorado River, and they've been storing it underground. They're gonna stay underground, when they store it underground, it stops evaporating. Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, they've been taking water, and they've been covering it over with particular flaps to protect it. The vendor water has been looking for places to put it underground, so to.
We, we lose thirty percent of our water for evaporation.
And so, and so this has been.
Even the Great Salt Lake, hell, the amount of water we lose off there to evaporation is monstrous.
And so this has been my first lead to them, is to try and get, talk to the water districts about making an, an application to their reclamation force study, to quantify how much water, in order to get us to the point where we're actually saving it. We are, as a state, not at the vanguard in terms of saving water with this, so this is where we start, starting with evaporate.
You know, this is really interesting, uh, from, uh, this point of view, uh, Weaver Basin, they, uh, we, we have a recharge project up at the mouth of the canyon, and so we recharge our aquifer on a regular basis.
I thought they were doing that now.
Uh, and Miranda, remember, she's got a recharge operation up in Huntsville going right, or up in Liberty?
Yeah, yeah.
Or Eden, Eden, yeah, going right now, so.
I forgot about.
There is truth to what you say there, uh, these recharge projects are really good, and they save the evaporation, and so that's, I agree with that, that's a really good thing.
Project, yeah.
So this is what, you need, you need money to do that, because, I mean, I spoke to the, to the State Department of Water Resources, says none of the districts have money to do that. So the state hasn't appropriated money for that.
Well, they haven't, but you know, in Weaver Basin's case, they recognize the importance of, so we just do it on the roll.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a recharge basin right at the mouth of Weaver Canyon, and they keep that thing full, and it just recharges, so it, we're, we're doing exactly what you say, at least Weaver Basin is.
Yeah.
So.
The district, yeah. Yeah.
So, to kind of just sum up, what I think is, I wanted to share the information with you, I'm glad to find out that you're a plumber, you know exactly.
He's a, well, brother's fire.
Yeah, what we're, what we're talking about here, about the need for safety of water, and the, and the quality of this water. And, uh, the need for education, because now you have, I read a story about, not in Weber County, but in, was it North, South Algen, where people were zero scaping?
Yeah.
You know, there is zero skating, which is not what you want anyway, you don't want zero skating, you want, because skating was supposed to, to reduce the urban islands, you're supposed to have certain kinds of, of a certain amount of vegetation in order to do that, so people are confused on what to do, and I think people are now not necessarily happy at being forced to convert, and so I just wanted to give them an alternative, I think education is one, and I think of reviewing of the current buildings, commercial buildings that the county has that do not have a recycling for the condensing. I think that is something that needs to be evaluated.
Makes good sense.
Yeah.
Alright, Richard.
I like where you're going with that.
You bet, thank you for coming in, hey, we, we appreciate your interest as a citizen. That's a big deal, so many people don't take any interest, they just have a blind eye to all this, and we appreciate that, you must have some sort of an engineering background.
Um, yes, I mean, you're giving me a strange thing, but you picked up on that. I, uh, I started out in law and business, and that, I just wasted my parents' money doing that because I was a water person. This may be since you saw, bounced around, and I, I started writing research reports, and I was asked to do one on wind, and then they, they said, well, we like the one on wind, do one on water. So I did one on all the water in the world, two thousand five and two thousand six, and then I moved to China, and then I got to.
You moved to where?
China, I lived in China six years, wishing that they've had deal with water issues for many, many years, and I taught at a engineering school, power and energy, so I taught about power plants, taught about combustion, I taught about water, how to get water out of this, and water out of that, so we're always looking at heat transfer and water, and so my perspective is different than someone who would have been a water engineer, just looking at essentially rivers and streams like that, we're looking at water. Water is necessary, once the machine age came, water was necessary to cool machines.
Yes, it was.
So, anyway, um, so hopefully, I'm hoping to work in this area, because I don't see any other, anyone other person doing it. We're interested in that particular phase of atmospheric water, water condensation, water evaporation. And this is right, the state needs, the state needs a program to control the evaporation, to figure out what needs to be done on the evaporation. The state needs a program in terms of figuring out what to do with condensation. This is easy, picking up the water off, out the air conditioner.
Yeah, I agree, alrighty, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming in, we do appreciate your time.
Thanks, thanks for coming in.
Bye.
See you.
See you guys.
Well, this, oh, it's right there. What's that? We're hoping about that pen, and it flew up in the air, and I didn't want it to move in. I don't, uh, I don't think it hit me.
Okay.
You think what? I, I can't tell if that pen hit me in the eye or.
Did it get you in the eye? Did it get you in the eye?
So this is, this is a continuation discussion of the Old Snow Basin Road, uh thirty nine. So last time John Lewis and these guys were here and then kind of. Kind of had an idea and I'll like print it off, but well, Eric sent this out to everyone. I kind of printed off. Kind of very kind of wrote down what was discussed. Um I sent this on to talk.
If you recall, we kind of discussed the cost estimate that was put together for this. Breakdown and and who would contribute what. Everyone was present in that meeting except for. Right, so he wanted to kind of discuss this one more time and and have another discussion about why he was here. What was, what was discussed uh previously was that the county would come to the table with a hundred thousand dollars.
That's right.
They'll cover the cost of the roadway to the east of Old Snow Basin Road. And then the remaining costs will be split with a two thirds split going to. Uh Legacy Mountain and one third to the basin.
Right. All right, that's where we ended up. So what do you guys want to say? Is that why you're here?
Well, yeah, I guess so. I don't know if you've seen the email that I sent in.
If it came this morning, I hadn't.
I have now. This, this was a couple of weeks ago or.
Really? Well, that'd be.
It was last, I think it was last, but I think you just sent it to me, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Well, the first thing, you know, you have us down for a third of it. Uh Legacy Mountain has forty one lots. We have ten lots. To me, that doesn't seem like a third. That's more like twenty percent. And then. After, you know, we get the development agreement, the plat went through, boy, we had a lot of time with this going through the public process. After the fact, a couple of weeks ago, you come back and you say, we need ten feet of ride away for the highway. So we needed to dedicate in that ten feet. So we had to change all of our plaits, all of our improvement plans. Well, that ten feet there, when you divide it out by the number of lot, by the square foot for price of the land. It comes out to about ten dollars and fifty one cents. So about twenty six per foot. What's the problem? So that comes out to twenty six thousand eight hundred.
When you say the ten feet, was that along Highway thirty? So so that is a little bit of a new point though, because that's the state that's requiring that dedication, not not the county.
Well, we went through the state last year. I mean, this, this was the counties so that you guys could have this lane, this D cell.
Yeah, I think there's enough room. Well, when we started talking about this, this uh turn lane and everything. We got, then it got brought up by you though, that this should be a wider item, boy. So that's when I asked you guys to show that dedication. So I think that's how it go.
So uh to to that point though, it goes back to the state that's requesting that dedication through us.
And they never reviewed it this past year. This was, went through quite the public process here. I would have to think they've received plans on it. And now in timing with wanting, the county wanting to do this, these turn lanes, suddenly it's ten feet, it's being required on us. And with, with dedicated, but that obviously there was some value there. And so if we're talking about sharing the construction costs. Need to also take into consideration, we've already participated at almost twenty seven thousand.
So.
So so we would.
Is that the state of Utah?
Yeah, but if it was on one of our, we would require dedication of any other developer dedicating. That's kind of just unfortunately the cost.
I understand that, but this is after the fact. After this plat had been reviewed multiple times by the county. Over a nine month period. It wasn't part of the development agreement, which received. Eight months worth of consideration. And so after the fact, you're saying, oh, now we need this. Even though we've already done all of our improvement drawings and all of our plaits.
Where we brought the state in kind of late on this, when we brought him in to have the meeting to talk about that intersection. And I guess we could have brought him, you know, moved that up a little bit.
Well, you know, the reality of it is, the need for this is generated by. The development and addition of the logs and the trips that they would generate.
Anyway, he's complaining about it. He's complaining about the timing. The fact has been nice to know before the development agreement. I can't argue that.
Or the improvement.
But in a situation like that. On a state road, don't, is it our responsibility as a county to involve the. State or is it their responsibility as a developer? Who goes to the state? I would deal like that.
Usually the developer, usually what we would do is indicate to them to coordinate with the state. Uh property that fronts their road, just because we as a county, we have zero jurisdiction over anything that fits along a state route. John, when you guys did your project over there at Osprey. I would imagine you guys coordinated with them directly on that, right?
Sure.
Yeah. The reality of it is, I personally, as a county engineer, don't have any jurisdiction over anything along the state route. That's.
So then the fact that they came in a little late really doesn't have anything to do with us.
That's that's beyond us. That's what the state.
We did meet with them over a year ago.
We, yeah, we did. We submitted to UDOT our final plat and our construction plans. Since we don't have any direct impact to UDOT, they quickly reviewed those construction plans, came back to us and said, yes, you're good.
And that was with no expansion of that turn line?
Well, I guess my thought too. This isn't your responsibility.
Yeah.
It's also not your responsibility to go develop the state route. So why are we being the ones on the hook here? So let me get this straight. So you went to UDOT and they, and you basically had. Your plans approved by them. They said there's not going to be a taking and then sometime after that, there was ten feet taking.
Almost a year later.
So, yeah, we.
What changed in that timeframe? I don't understand why.
And I don't know what changed on there, but I know we we talked to him about this lane and we asked, well, what's the right of way needed here? And they said, oh, it's this. So I looked at the plaque and it didn't show that right away. So then I asked, sent an email to you guys. I said, we need to have this additional ten feet that you know that you dot is asking. So I don't know if they missed it or who know, I don't know what happened, but.
So so Tucker, the current right of way width is is what on the roadway?
I'm not even sure. Probably a hundred foot.
I think it's a hundred, but I think they want to go to a one twenty. So inside of a hundred foot right of way, we can get up to, what is that, six lanes of traffic? Inside of a hundred foot plus a borrowed bit on the sides. So I I don't know if this is more of just a standard that is being applied to the DOT roadway. Inside of agreements with this.
I I guess.
I don't know.
The challenge is you guys are here arguing with us on this dedication, but it's not our right way and it's not our place to say. Yes, either dedicated or no, it's not required. I would advise you probably to take that dedication question up with the state rather than.
First of all, I look at as we're discussing, not arguing. I I don't think we're here as adversaries or at all.
No, no, and I didn't mean for it in that.
Where we're getting stuck a little bit is where the state, UDOT, David Albert group there is stating, you're good. And up to two weeks ago, there was no requirement or discussion on dedication. Until the county, you know, requirement through Tucker came to us. So I guess that's where we're just maybe a little stocking, a little confused. Road, but the county is telling us the one that's has to do with.
We were told by the state Utah, we had to do that, right?
So we've, in the past, when we have subdivision on a state right of way, uh we always reach out to you and ask what, what's the right?
Normal question.
And it probably didn't get, well, it's probably the same question, same thing happened with the David Alga group is you guys aren't accessing off their right of way, so. We don't even worry about it. But then where this gets brought up about this turn lane and I asked specifically, well, who has right of way width for this turn lane? I don't know. I, it might be that this turn lane fits in current today's, you know, today's right of way width. But the other saying, well, in the future it needs to be this, so let's ask for it now. But I don't, I don't know if we need to go to UDOT and say we.
Well, all I know is we originally took the uh position here that we weren't going to do anything to that intersection. We'd walked away from it. And said, well, you know, we're just not going to worry about it. It's on a state road. Well, then they came to us and said that that wasn't really an option. Right at the meeting. Right. Yeah. And they said, you know, you basically have to fix that. Uh and so.
You're causing.
Yeah, that got us real low.
That's correct.
Now, we kind of took a position that we felt like this place is a little bit of hardship on you all. So we, we collectively, as three commissioners, decided we'd throw a hundred thousand dollars in for the uh east end of that. Because we felt like, well, why did we do that?
Been nice like we always are.
And anyway, uh we felt like that was maybe a little bit out of side of your scope, John.
I have a suggestion.
Okay.
And I I I'm just throwing this out there as this, as a suggestion. Thank you for offering to pay for a hundred of that. That's I think a big help. Um you know, you're asking him to pay roughly eighty thousand, be a hundred sixty thousand, all trying to get this job done, which obviously needs to get done. So my question for you guys and maybe Cortland is. And and this is if even they want to go along with this, again, just to suggest. Uh their current zoning and even the previous zoning, you know, it was CDR two or one and now it's F R three. Either way, they're only choosing to do ten things, but the zoning is roughly twenty units per acre and they have three acres. So there's sixty things there. Okay? So if he does nothing in eighteen months, it goes back to zoning. So I would, I would argue that the density is still there, even if he only chooses to use ten, which thank you for only doing that. Um if you guys would be interested in allowing him to sell me the density to be moved to another village. I would cover his bill and your bill. So the whole three sixty.
How much density you talking about now?
I I'm guessing it's fifty left over for the six. And, you know, not to be moved into some open space, move it to some future village someday. But then I'll cover even the county's bill.
Okay.
Just a thought.
It's a great offer.
Yeah, and to help win, win and win. Is that something you're amiable to?
Well, what does that, what does that add up to be?
Like we discussed previously, we're talking right around three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
No, no, I don't know the net.
Oh.
So uh you're talking about our hundred thousand?
Well, I just pay everybody's bill.
He paid, he'll take care of. Take care of the whole thing.
Yeah, we'll just cover the cost.
Well, yeah, but uh. Uh you were already on the hook for.
Hundred and sixty.
Yeah, hundred and sixty. So it's an additional two hundred thousand.
Sure.
So two hundred thousand, so basically four thousand dollars you're paying for a TDR.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that is what I wanted to empty.
Yeah, he puts the value on the TDR.
Yeah, well, you know, four thousand dollar TDR is pretty cheap. Uh we haven't really established a value. Well, we haven't and I'm not, I don't believe it's our position. Our to.
It's gonna be completely different on, you know. Actually, what that does, it kind of starts the market. Start the process because nobody's been able to actually put in a transfer as a. So I mean, whether that's cheap or overpriced, who knows? The market will soon tell. Market, yeah, the market. He may, he may end up taking those and saying, I'll, I'll got a buyer, but he'll only give you two thousand. Well, that's his problem.
But if you remember, we had this discussion. I don't think it was open to everybody, but we had this discussion in one of our work meetings about the fact that he was leaving forty. Uh or sold units, TDRs, or they weren't TDRs, but development rights.
You're talking about John's development.
No, I'm talking about his development rights.
Okay.
But John's in the same boat where he has X amount of property and then decides to divide it this many ways. Does he now have surplus of additional?
That's a question. And that was going to be my question. So is it your opinion that uh with that ten units that you still have an additional forty or fifty TDRs that could be sold? Yeah, all we have to do is just hold on the development. The development agreement expires, plaque expires. And those development rights are sitting there.
Okay. You know, it's really a Cortland question, but assuming they're still there, once he records, they're not there, I would think, because it's now.
Yeah.
And that was kind of our position. Once you record, they're gone.
Right.
And the same thing with you.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, unless we put something, you know.
Right, in writing.
In writing.
That establishes that. And that was the very discussion we had.
At what time do those development rights go away?
Uh and what do we do to? To hold on to it? If you wanted to hold on to those forty or fifty rights.
Yeah.
How do you do that? Is there a piece of papers recorded? Is there?
Well, we did that on Legacy. We worked with you guys and Eric. So on Legacy, the leftover density we held as what on the plat?
Uh well, we we came up with a number which we thought were viable. Fortunately.
Well, we did some kind of agreement with the county to secure them.
We, we haven't. I mean, we haven't gone through that process yet. We're kind of stuck getting the pluminaries.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, we, from our level here, we haven't seen anything with that all.
Okay.
So if you guys in fact are doing that, you're doing it outside of the legislative process.
Uh that's what I'm saying. Is it, isn't it on the plat or something?
Uh it's, it's noted.
Yeah. Yeah, you, you, I think if you don't do something, it goes away.
Well, yeah, so that's what I was gonna say. So you're of the, you're now under these assumption. You, and I'm assuming you guys have worked with us that have worked with them, because they've noticed something on a plaque. Has been recorded, but we're going to recognize it as the legislative body. Oh, boy, that's a jump that went from there all the way to there. I'm not sure that we will recognize that because you put it on a plaque. I don't know.
I, yeah, that's a good question. That's probably, that's probably a Cortland question.
Yeah.
In my mind, until, if that was brought up in the legislative process.
If it was and like. That was the whole plan and.
Yeah, you talked to who?
Both your commission and the planning commission. We've, we've been through the whole process with the leftover density, which what was there? And, you know, Cortland and Rick and the rest of them asked us to preserve it a certain way, so it didn't disappear.
Yeah, I don't doubt they did. I just don't have, I don't have recollection of that conversation of this with us three.
I guess we better go back and we have, have we, have we signed that plat?
No, no, no.
Legacy I'm talking about, yeah.
Well, that can be in debate. That's fine. One is not recorded yet. You can agree to whatever you want to agree to, as long as you put it on in writing for him.
Yeah.
But since it's not recorded, I guess that would be my, my question is, would you allow me to buy it from him and move it to a, to a village? If we paid everybody's bill?
I, I think we need to look at the, in concept, I, I'm not opposed to that. Uh that doesn't mean I'm recognizing forty or fifty units right now, but I think what you're proposing. Makes sense, but I think we have to have some discussion as far as the, how the dollar value.
Yeah.
It did, apologize.
But anyway, I.
No, that's okay. Find a way to say yes is what you are. That's all. It's awesome. Well, and I like to, I, I like to be forward thinking on this stuff and approve these, but this is a huge one. This is not, this is not a little jump. This is a. Well, this is something we've never done.
No, I like the idea that it sets a standard. I like it. I don't mind saying that either. I think it's great.
Yeah, I like to say, set a baseline. I just don't know what that baseline should be right now.
And he's the one taking the gamble.
The only one that, the market is what the market is. You can't set a baseline.
If we approve this, we are setting that baseline right now. If we, if we say, look, it's four thousand or.
Right, and the next person says, well, I have, you know, I have a unit on the three acres next to my house. I don't want to give up. That for four grand. I want to sell for three hundred.
Yeah.
You know, so that's a different situation with a different TDR value. And the other person trying to buy that at the time has to decide if it's worth it or not.
Right, well, we haven't decided. What we're going to have as receiving areas, what we're going to have as sending areas.
Well, in, in this particular case, I would say it would, until you decide a broader sense, it has to go to one of the villages.
Yeah, we don't have a choice right now.
Yeah, has to go one of the villages.
Right, and and anything else is negotiable whatever day maybe, but.
Okay.
So it has to go to a village.
Has to go to a village.
Is that my statute? We got something in there that says that?
That's our organ right now, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It's some general plan.
Yeah.
Now, we've had discussions about changing that, but right now it's just, TDRs can only be taken or transferred.
When you talk about the village areas, they're pretty nebulous, you know, it's not like we've got hard lines.
No, you, you do. Seven spots in the valley.
No, I understand that, but the size of them.
No, that's true.
Yeah, I'm talking about, I mean, we know within reason, but the exact line, we don't know. So that could change a little.
Yeah, you could expand those.
Right, okay. Well, you kind of called our, our buffer a little bit. I mean, you know, we've been talking about this ever since I got here and I've been, I, I, I've kind of resisted. Uh jumping into exact. Lines on all this because I'm a little inexperienced here. I've done a lot of this, but I've never done TDRs. And the, the concepts behind it, I'm solid in my mind about it, but I've never made any decisions like this. And I don't want to get this decision wrong. And you're the first one to actually walk in and said, okay, I'm buying today. Like, what? We didn't expect that.
I think Charlie's still kind of working through this process, how it would work out.
Well, and that's, I was going to say, Mr. Chair, I would like to run this by planning and possibly even the planning commission. And just get their viewpoint as well.
Oh, I.
This is, this is a big deal.
This is a big deal.
It's fine that we've been working on this for a long time.
Yeah.
As long as I've been here, yeah.
I'm not opposed to starting this, you know, we've talked about this enough. It's time to, you know, come to a point of decision on this, but uh. It wouldn't hurt. I'd like to have that other input. It wouldn't hurt, I'd like to have that other input.
If I get.
You know, I've, I've spoken to Charlie about this before. And I think it's the, uh, the Ogden property up there for their, their culinary water. That they were going to sell off their development rights that we could go there, and he was talking of. Value very similar to what this would end up being.
Oh, Ogden City.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were talking about five grand, so who knows, the market will, will tell you.
Well.
They were talking five grand?
Yeah, you know.
But you know, Ogden, they think they have something that has never been documented. We don't know that they have these, uh, development rights. Yeah, this is something they've just absolutely picked up there and grabbed and said, well, we think we've got this many. It was like, well.
This, this is a quarter that, you know, Lisa Canton Zero has been trying to put a hotel on since I moved there.
Yeah, well.
Now, now's the chance to get rid of.
At least he's got an argument, uh, that these are, and we would acknowledge that, that in this. Prior to this, that those development rights went with this property, we, we would acknowledge that because that in fact. Like you said, John, having been there, you know, they, they have run with this property.
If he goes to sleep three team months, they'll pop back up. That's the reality.
Yeah.
Yeah, they expire and come back, this agreement.
Do you have interest rates rising, you have, yeah, economy changes, so. Yeah, no, I get it.
Well, I'm not willing to take a position this minute on that, are you?
No, no, not in terms of numbers, I would say this, I'm willing to take a position that, uh, that I think that's a good direction to head. In terms of the sale, now, again, what that means at the end of the day, dollar wise, I'm not committing to that. But I think this gives us the opportunity to bring this back on the table and try to give some direction to T D Rs up there.
Let me ask a question if I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
What's to stop, what's to stop? Uh, Todd and John from doing it on the side?
Us, we have to recognize it for it to be any good. So that's, when you say what's stopping, it's us three right here. I mean, they can sell and transfer and do all they want, but if we don't recognize it, it's all for naught.
We don't recognize the T D Rs.
Uh, well, the development rights, whether they're transferable or not.
Yeah, I, I actually think Charlie's already finished all that and you can transfer, but I'm not positive you guys will recognize this leftover density.
That's. I think we'd recognize we could transfer them, well, what I'd say we would have to agree to is there forty, it's kind of like Ogden City. I've, they've got a number of six hundred, I gave them a number of zero, so maybe somewhere in between.
Might want to subtract out roads, or who knows? Is, I'm fine.
So the discussion is based on what we would recognize as being realistic in terms of, um, the T D Rs up there that. That makes sense for the overall public.
Plus, you know, Charlie assumes we give him too much, uh, lead here, and, uh. We don't always agree with Charlie on these kind of things, well, that's yet to be determined.
Yeah, well, it has a zoning, and it has a density associated with the zoning, and it has an acreage. So it looks pretty straightforward to me.
No, it's pretty, I, I agree, this is a lot more straightforward than Ogden City.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Well, you're right.
Yeah, but here's our way, here's how you cluster things and put things in villages.
Yeah.
Like I say, the only real question here is, would we allow that? Would we, uh, acknowledge that as a development right?
I think we'd have to recognize it as some type of development right, now again, it comes down to what that number is.
Yeah. Well, and we, he's, he's got a good argument about his, uh, the amount he says is there.
No, I mean, he's exactly right, you know, he goes away to Hawaii for eighteen months, comes back, he's got fifty units he can put there.
He does.
Or whatever, forty or whatever it may be. So, I mean, and we're not bringing additional, we're not bringing additional, we're using existing. Putting those where we've already talked about in the general plan, by the way, that goes into village areas.
Plus knocking out a couple hundred thousand or hundred thousand worth of public expense.
Yeah.
So. Part of the, uh, problem here is wastewater, that's what really, uh, stymies what could be put on there. So when you go back to a hotel, that can't be built today anyway, because there's no wastewater, uh. Connection for it.
Not yet, and the villages. You know, the villages we would take if you don't have sewer solutions yet either.
That's correct.
Someday they will.
That's correct.
You know, it's a chicken or the egg, I think.
It is a little bit, I agree. Like, that's a great point, why do we care if you transfer if, uh.
Can't do anything with it yet.
Yeah, can't do anything with it yet anyway.
Yeah.
In either spot.
Yeah, it's all been on the come.
But then we recognize that exists.
Well, then somebody over there has land with density on, and now bank will loan on and they can build a sewer. And it does lead one thing to another to help get this system up and going, we quit poisoning the lake.
Recognize. Well, it, I, it doesn't hurt to give some more information. I just take, I just take the lane.
Well, yeah, but what this is, this is actually gonna delay it longer. I mean, as far as we were concerned, this is done, go ahead and develop. But now, all of a sudden, you're asked to make another decision, I'm not sure we're in a position, we want to make that decision right now.
Would you guys be interested in meeting like a week from now, after talking to the experts?
I don't think they'll be back in time enough, early enough to.
Who's they?
The planning, planning department, I don't think they'll be back till Wednesday sometime.
Who are they?
They're at a conference.
Is that where Sean is?
It is.
I thought they were gonna be back Wednesday.
That's why I said.
Well, he said a week from.
Next week.
Yeah, next week.
Okay, so that gives, but, but that's my point, it gives them a couple of days to, I don't.
Well.
I wonder if.
I say a week from now, they're hurt.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a week from now, and then I really think it's a Cortland issue more than anything.
Yeah.
Is it legally there?
I, I agree.
Well, so legally, like they were saying, and the development agreement has a longer time than the eighteen months, but if he. Does nothing, it expires at some point in the future, and those development rights in the F R three zone are still there. That's undisputed, I mean.
But so what, if they don't have, uh, a way to develop without sewer?
Well, the, the development rights are still there, like they were saying.
Understand.
If somebody built a sewer system or something, that would.
All, all we're saying is a matter of time, so it might be five years or ten years before they'd be, still have at some point in time when sewer gets.
Then you have a house on a lot, are you gonna allow that house to subdivide that lot? See, all different things come into.
Yeah, there are lots to consider, but. A legal standpoint, as opposed to.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get, does he really have forty or fifty units at some point, whether they can be used or not, does he have those rights?
Right.
So then the question comes in, and this is.
What was your buddy Matt?
Well.
So the, the question is, then, does, uh, the fact that, uh. We give him this development, do those rights go away? Or do he, is he able to hold him in abeyance, thinking that he might someday be able to put more development on that?
Well.
Property.
That's, I think that's a question to be, my opinion is, is once that plat's recorded, they go away. Now, unless it's in the development, unless there's an agreement like they've done with Legacy, that we give it, but that's legislative process, I think.
Then it doesn't matter if a sewer system comes along later on, because the rights are gone at that point.
Right, if, unless we recognize that he can hold them.
Right.
And sell them at some point.
Right, and that's what this comes down to, I absolutely agree with that, everything you just said, Gage.
Yeah.
And I, yeah, I would, I would agree, even if he is limited right now to ten. There could be a future change to the plat or something that you agree to in the future. That would allow him to use the full potential of that zone, potentially, I mean, you might have to amend the development agreement, you might have to.
But that would come about through with the documentation of the development agreement or the recorded plat, whatever.
Right, so as it is right now, the development agreement is what is limiting it to ten. And the development agreement does specify, I was looking at this, that after the expiration of those ten years. Then the restriction of the ten units will still be in effect. But again, that's subject to legislative body change.
Yeah.
Hold on, what's subject?
The, the limitation of ten units.
Okay, so ten years, how do you come up with that, ten years or ten units? Didn't you say ten years?
Right now, the agreement says it shall be in full force and effect until ten years from the effective date.
Yeah, so you're saying after ten years, if he, if he wanted to put more on, he could at that point.
It says after the expiration of this agreement, the development and use restrictions. Of section seven of the agreement, which is where it's limited to ten units. Shall prevail as legislatively adopted land use restrictions. Typical legislative action shall be required to make changes there too.
So the answer is yes.
The way it's set up is the ten unit limitation stays in effect if he develops it. Forever, unless the legislative body takes action, if he doesn't develop it at all. Then after this expires in ten years, it goes back to the full entitlement of sixty something units or whatever is allowed under that.
Yeah, I get it.
So it depends on whether or not he develops in accordance with the development agreement. So I would say, once he records the plat, then he's locked into this unless there's a legislative.
So at that point, the additional T D R or D Rs, development rights go away, poof. Unless, so we recognize a sale.
Change.
Right, okay.
So it depends on whether he takes action, and I would assume that would be recording a plat that would trigger that.
Yeah, so to your point, Gage, once he goes and has the sides and records that plat, they can run all the sewer they want, then he doesn't get any more units. He's got ten, and that's it.
No, that's exactly right.
Okay.
No, that's exactly right.
This is what's fun, this, this is fun when it's being the chair.
Yeah, well, do you want to say something else, Commissioner Harvey? You look like you got the itch to say something.
I've always got the itch. Listen, I, I, I really actually, this is incredibly short sighted. But I like the idea of starting the process. That's where I am right now, I like the idea of starting the process. It, it, it's irresponsible and somewhat reckless, I recognize that, but it starts at somewhere. Now, my worry is.
Why is it reckless?
Because we don't have all the information we'd hope to have right now, that's why we haven't established this thus far. But it starts, it, it starts at somewhere, this, there could be some unintended consequences, that worries me. But that's where I am. Don't make a motion or something there?
No, I'm not, no, I.
I could be on the odd man out.
No, I, I would like to start the process where I said, I think, twenty minutes ago, and I'd like to start that process, because we don't have a process. What I look at is, okay, if, from a valley resident. Point of view, if that ten units goes away and we wait eighteen months or two years, and now there's. Uh, a thirty or forty or fifty unit complex. Put, brought back on the table, now you're looking at forty units on that site. In my mind, it makes a lot more sense from an Ogden Valley and probably development standpoint, to have those. Go into a village area where we've already approved density, I don't, I mean, I've always been, I mean, I was one of your worst advocates for. Having forty or fifty units there, because I just didn't think that was the proper location for it, I liked your ten units. But if, again, I recognize I'm a private property rights guy, if, if somebody could come in there and put forty or fifty. I'd rather those forty or fifty go in one of those other village areas.
Yeah, so, and be transferred.
And be transferred. I'm just saying, if, and I don't think. You know, I, I hate to take rights away that, and he, you know, I don't know what you paid to the property, but you. Those forty or fifty were probably built somewhat into that price, I would guess.
Cortland?
Yeah.
Right now, the T D R ordinance is in place, is that correct?
It's in place in certain areas, like the D R R home zone, that that provides for it, and they did. Put it into the form-based village zone, I don't think it's fully in place for the whole valley, that's.
In that figure spot.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, to transfer from, you're saying.
Yeah, I, I thought it was already written and done, and you could transfer from anywhere as long as it went to a village, but maybe that's not completely.
I'd have to verify with.
I thought that was true, but I'm not, probably to verify that.
All right.
Anyway, I mean, we do have, and we have a code that says, is part of the form-based village zone ordinance. Uh, talks about the locations where development rights. May come from. To a lot or parcel in the form-based village zone, so actually, they do have the.
Yeah.
Sending units, right?
Um, or what, does it list them by area?
Yeah, it lists the zones, R A fifteen, R A twenty, A B three, F five, F B three, S one, F R one, F R three.
And this is F R one. F R three, okay, so it's in the ordinance.
Right.
They have the right to send them.
That's the way I understood it, take them off the valley floor, put them into the village.
And this does get tricky, because if his. Development agreement expires or defaults, then it's set up to go back to the previous zone, which was, what, C V R one? I think it was, right?
Which is the same density as F R three.
Okay.
Yeah, that doesn't bother me anymore, because they don't have the sewer.
Okay.
So unless they're willing to wait for it or develop their own, which becomes so expensive.
So could they amend the development agreement to include this? This talk of, the, has this many development rights, they can sell them? That how we'd have to go through this process?
Could do it that way, um, yeah, I think that would have to. Be a legislative item that would make, I don't know, see, if, yeah, if it's a development agreement that's altering the current zoning, it would have to go through the. Planning commission, um, but if it's not, I don't know, I'd have to look into that.
I think I would just take a document that you guys came up with that recognized the transfer from parcel A to parcel B. And get them to sign it and say, okay, we acknowledge that that happened, and it's now, and that's what Charlie uses, like a little. Chart that goes on the, on the. Property, we can identify where and, um, you could approve whether it's a village or not, and, and all that kind of stuff.
You know, I, I do, I do, with what I just said on top of that, and what the discussion here. I would like there to be some kind of process to go through the planning commission, I don't want it totally, I think it would be.
That's right.
I think it would be the right thing to do to bring them in, I trust them, that's why they do this all day, that's the right thing to do, but I'm. I like the idea of, okay, we have an opportunity here to get it going, let's, I mean, it, it's gonna be a can of worms. So let's get it started.
Why do you want to bring the planning commission into somebody's rights? That's all I say there. I guess that's a big deal.
Well, is it already a right or not, that's the question.
That is, yeah, that is the question.
The question, yeah, I mean, we've got kind of a, the gray area here is, how many rights do we actually have?
Right.
Knowing that it's been approved for the ten units, knowing that it could revert to a different zone, I mean, there's so many unknowns here, it's really, it's gonna come down to. Personal decision, we think, you know, I may think you have thirty units, they may think you have ten. You know, Commissioner Harvey may think you have zero, who knows, but that's what I think we have to have a decision on.
For today, we can come back to that, but for day, you are here to complain about the ways the divisions took place, right?
Discuss.
Okay.
Discuss, not argue.
Okay, that's right, so the point is, you felt a desire to alter this. With what we came up with here, we realized when we made this decision, that the split by unit was not equitable. But we felt like your impact, where you were next to the road was higher. And so we elected to put a hundred thousand dollars in there to soften this blow. However, we felt like it was gonna, and that was the decision we come up with, have I misstated that in any way?
That's a good point.
Okay, so that's where we ended up.
So we've really, so what we're saying is, we really got two questions here, do we, do we dig on that hundred thousand? And, but we still have the question on the table about development rights, and I think we need to answer.
Yeah, but. But even without that. Is the split fair, because he's questioning the split, without the hundred thousand, is it fair to, uh, split it? A third and two thirds, when he's only got, uh, twenty, twenty percent of the lots.
Within the.
He's got forty one, he's got ten.
The other thing I remember us discussing is that, uh. Because of the types of units that were going in at that development versus the types of units that were going up in the other development, that's how we came up with.
So to answer your question, I like this split, I mean. So to answer your question, I like this split. I mean, we talked about that. We debated that, uh.
Heavily.
Heavily. So I guess my thought right now is, if, if we're always talking about the split. I would say we stay with this split, but at the same time, recognize that we need to deal with this. Development right transfer, and then John at some point in time, once that decision's made, could reimburse. That development for, for their share of it. So, and I don't want to change that.
So you don't want to change.
I don't, I'm not prepared to change.
I mean, you don't want to change.
But at the same time, I think we need, you brought very, some, a very important, uh.
Compelling information.
Information that I think we have to address.
But one thing is happening here that doesn't seem to be fair. And that is the fact that he's got twenty six thousand dollars for the road. In property loss, and it's just because he has the front of it. Although, that's what happens everywhere.
Given up roadways and right of ways.
That's the nature.
It's after the fact.
Yeah, but that is ours. That's the state's doing.
Request came through the county.
Yeah, because the state told us we had to do.
Hopefully you guys will let me pay for all of this. It'll be a viewpoint. That's. Come on, what am I missing?
We just had it, you know, Gary just told us, the reason we did this because the state had to.
That's right. Well, and I, and I understand kind of the mechanics, how that took place. Obviously, your beef is with the state, not us, but. You know, whether we started that process, how we got involved with that process, process. I don't think you were treated fairly on it, whoever created the problem.
So do you want to set, send him to the state and say, look, oh, deal with them, and if they say you don't have to do it, we're fine with it. We, we get cared less anyway.
Well, it's a state highway.
Yeah, yeah, which is exactly the position we took in the beginning.
Yeah, go to the state.
And we did our best as a body politic to wrestle the state, to get them to fully.
Well, now the states come in. I don't think there's a choice.
Yeah.
Can I ask you, why is there a difference between our single family homes and legacy single family homes? Per our development. We are.
Yeah, but some of your homes could have eight bathrooms.
You don't have any restrictions on that, but you could have the same thing. We're both, because there's no short term rentals, we're both single family homes.
Will you be doing fraction ownership?
No.
So just one owner per ten bedroom home?
Ten bedroom, eight bedroom.
Oh, I thought it was ten.
Well, so whether, if we divided it one third, two third. That's, he, his argument is that's a taking every bit as much as, uh, he should be at twenty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you also remember the state, when you asked them what normally triggers the, uh. The improvement in the widening is the developer who's up at that point.
That is true. They did say that.
That actually put everything on, on CW. We came in and offered.
Yeah.
Retroactively after the fact, even though we'd already recorded, completed everything. We said we would come back in and contribute, so.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
So you say we're coming late to you. We come really late.
They're really late to us.
Yeah, you could have been.
Back to us up to the state, they would have hung you up the whole thing.
More than likely.
That was another reason we decided to throw a hundred grand in there, because we felt like that was unfair.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, well, so you just want to hold this for a week?
I think we hold it for a week. I, okay, I'd say let's bring it back next week, those who have an answer to this. Get this thing off the table.
All right, we'll put you first on the agenda next week.
What time is that?
Uh, one thirty. One thirty?
Yeah.
Next week? We got something going before it?
Yeah, I'm coming back from St. George.
Ah, gee, one thirty.
Well, I wanted to have you get, have time for lunch for Jake, yeah.
Yeah.
We're tired of pizza.
So we'll, we'll talk with Charlie and see what's up with the, exactly what he has as far as TDRs.
Okay, yeah.
Well, John, you can push it right into decision here.
Yeah, I mean, just one more point on TDRs. The state law says we can't allow the use of transferable development right. Unless the county adopts an ordinance allowing that, and so we do have. Again, that ordinance set up in limited circumstances, but does that apply everywhere? Charlie and Rick will have to.
And I think the answer to that, we know right now it's for valley floor to village area.
Yeah, and so they did incorporate it into the form based village zone. I think that was the intent.
Valley floor. So the fact he's above that road, is he wanting the valley floor?
No, they did it by zone.
Yeah, but.
Okay, by zone. Okay, then, although the niche set.
I, I, the idea was resorts. I said, I think it was resorts versus, started out being valley floor to resorts, thinking. Powder Mountain, Snow Basin.
Yeah, the DR one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, I'm sure planning will have its things to say about that.
All right.
Where does that legislative process take place? Is it in a work meeting? Is it in the commission meeting on Tuesday? Where the rights are acknowledged and.
That's, I think, yet to be determined.
Okay.
I, it would probably be a combination of both of those, where you discuss it in here until everyone's in agreeance, and then probably. Sign and ratify the document.
Yeah, there's probably a lot to be flushed out with that process. Charlie has this form that we pointed out.
And if we get a flight path agreed to, then we'll fund it and be awesome, and he's off the hook and gone, and it takes us a month or two to finish the paperwork. That's fine, but. As long as we're, you know, in agreement or not, one or the other.
Right, right.
You've already dedicated the ten feet, right?
I want your blessing.
It's shown on the plot, the plot is recorded.
Okay. All right, we'll see y'all next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Boy, I take. These meetings don't all just go the way you think, do they?
No.
Sometimes it's a great big surprise.
Were you by chance left fielder baseball? Cause that came just.
I was left field.
Yeah, that came out of left field, no question.
Ask Shane how it's like being in an office near me. I pull this stuff out pretty often. Something hits you, hits you. It kind of occurred to me walking in here. Okay.
Scott Warren told me to tell you hello.
Oh, I don't know.
He and I are buddies, thanks. This is Scott Mendolza meeting right now, right?
Wait till Gage comes back in, and we'll ask you right now.
Um, the sheriff, our bond is just asking if he can come in. He says he just has ten minutes worth of items.
I, I gotta get the head.
Is he gonna go before?
Can I help with something? Clean up or something like that? No, no, thanks.
All right, Sheriff, how you doing?
Good, how are you, Commissioner?
Good.
We're kind of disappointed you thought, you know, having golf tournament this year.
Well, it is, but.
You guys do such a good job of it, but we're not.
So, uh, shall we, this Mountain West Golf Tournament, has everybody RCP'd? Have you know what the? There it is. We got the invitation about a week and a half, two weeks ago.
Oh, I haven't seen this one. You wanna do this one?
Well. What's there?
It's May twenty seventh, that's just coming right up.
Yeah, yeah.
Have teams left.
So Gage, have you RSVP'd this Golden West Golf Tournament?
Yeah, I have.
So you're planning on going?
I'm planning on going, yeah. I went after groundbreaking.
Right, last week.
Last week.
Who are you golfing with, Gage?
I just told Carrie to sit, well, I think Gloria, they also sent an invite to Gloria, so I'll probably be golfing with her and then two others.
Okay.
I don't know.
All right. You wanna?
Are you gonna do it?
Well, I brought it in to ask about it today. I assume Harvey got one too.
I've RSC, RS, I don't do too many of those, but Golden West is one I support.
Twenty seventh, huh?
What day was that?
I'm gonna look right now.
May twenty seventh.
As long as it doesn't conflict with the sheriff.
Yes, a Friday. Yeah. Send it in for me, would you?
I will.
I'm putting on my calendar.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. All right.
So do you want Scott to golf with you, or are you gonna get your own tape?
No, no.
I'm happy.
Just let them assign them. A lot of times they like to assign us around.
Sometimes they split us up.
And uses.
Okay, so I'll just do as individuals then, and you're already done, Gage. I'll make sure that they have your though as well.
Make sure they got me, but I know they had Gloria and, you know, they may put Gloria and I together, they may split us up, I don't know.
I want your Jeff Payne outfit, or your Payne Stewart outfit.
Yeah, you can't have that, bud.
Dang it.
I like that. That's my outfit.
You waiting for Harv?
Yeah, we're just waiting for him to walk in. Oh, he might be out there with those other guys.
I just saw you call with the.
Well, that last meeting went.
Not even about.
Way out there. Well, John, he made an offer to buy these development rights in the middle of it. Well, you know, we've never actually allowed a transferable development right yet. We've talked about it for the entire time I've been here. We've never acknowledged them. Well, this will be the first.
Really?
Uh, so this is a big deal. So, this is something we gotta get into. So. Next week meeting, next week's work meeting, we need to have. John Lewis and these other guys, send group that was here today, first on the agenda, at one thirty.
Christie, did you hear that?
Christie.
She's talking a bit.
Hey, Jim, do you have any agenda items for the department head tomorrow?
Yeah, we don't have anything on that meeting.
No, I don't.
Okay.
Well, I have plenty if you want occupied time.
Well, I hate to just occupy time.
Well, at, at my office, where it's hat being held.
Oh, yeah.
We're, we're, we're gonna open up the warehouse so people can do tours, so there's some, there's some meaning to it.
So you don't really need an agenda other than just.
Well, it's in the warehouse, the new warehouse, yeah.
Right. So then if we just.
Call it a tour?
Yeah, call it a tour.
Breakfast and tour.
Breakfast and tour, if you want to do that, I mean, we.
And then all the, welcome, and you can.
I can do that.
Whatever.
And if, if Lisa's even there, we could also do an update on water and weather for, because that's a big impact for us. On the emergency management, Lisa Schult, Schwartz.
Yeah, Schwartz.
If you want.
Well, we've got nothing going.
Well, I, I, I want to build something and help if it's meaningful for you guys.
So I'm just gonna call it a tour.
Breakfast and tour.
Breakfast and tour, okay.
Great, so, uh.
Yeah, you bet.
Do you have any agenda items for tomorrow morning?
Oh, it does. No, I don't.
Okay.
Or, no, I don't think so.
Okay, so we'll have a breakfast and tour, I think that's it.
What are we doing? So we're meeting now at Sheriff's Hall Place.
Oh, we are tomorrow at the warehouse. Okay. Good, I'm glad you told me. I thought it was, yeah. Okay, so it's just gonna be the tour and, yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I offer, we can have Lisa Schwartz, I think she's here. She can come in and give us an update on emergency matters that pertains to snowpack and runoff.
Yeah.
That's always interesting.
So Harv, if she's got that information, that'd be good to have.
Yeah, Gage is going to this golf tournament on the twenty seventh with Golden West. I just decided I'm going. Are you going?
On the twenty seventh?
Um, that's a Friday.
I think it was a.
Shell is gonna RSVP me right now.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you want to be RSVP? Yeah, that's on a Friday.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. Yep.
That's always a pretty good tournament.
All right, uh, so the second thing I wanted to ask you guys, we got this letter from Nordic Village. On there, they listed everything. I think you got one too.
Yeah, that's from the friends.
Uh-huh, you got that. Well, it requires a, uh, reply here. They're asking us to reply. At the top of that second one, it says, we've given the planning, these details to your planners. On density, we, uh. After verification of your services, we could have a confirmation of these figures. Do we agree on these figures and on this method? So they're waiting for us to confirm that.
Well, I think so, the planning commission. I don't think we can confirm it until the planning commission's heard it. Now, the planning commission did approve the ordinance. For the village overlay, but that's not the rezone. And what this refers to is the five hundred and twenty five units.
But that's a down zone by over a hundred units.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
Maybe a hundred fifty.
I guess our response would be, look, you're, as far as we're concerned, you're in, you know, the. Ordinance would allow you up to six, whatever it was. If it's below that, we support it.
So we allow them to sell their development.
I just was gonna say that.
That's.
I just was gonna say that.
Once they record the plat, it's gonna be over. And so what it comes down to, just what we're talking about here. Unless we have a, an agreement with the development agreement, but right now, the only place they could transfer it to would be another resort.
So do another, uh, village note.
Village note.
Yeah, that'd be okay. So do you want me to schedule a meeting for us three to sit in with the planners with Charlie and them and flush this thing out?
I think so.
I do too.
Well, I think, I think we need to come up, if the decisions other than. So they, they're leaving a hundred and fifty units on the table.
About.
Yeah, so. Are, are we gonna let them put that in a separate agenda item or put it on the plat that they can transfer somewhere? Or we're gonna, we're not gonna allow that? I think that's a discussion.
That's a discussion.
That's a discussion we need to have now because it's coming up now with.
That's right, it's the same discussion.
Same discussion.
Okay, I'll put it on there. I just want to make sure you're okay with that.
I can make an argument either way. I mean, I.
So then I, we're not gonna answer this until we have that question. Listen, I don't want to. I want to wait, yeah. Okay, I'll just tuck this up and hold it away.
Well, and what's, that, is, in that letter, he says that they're holding off. I thought that's.
Yeah, it says that.
So as far as I'm concerned, they're holding off. It's really in their court.
No, he says right in there, he asks us if we could reply agreeing to the numbers.
Well, what I'm saying is that they could come back at any time and then force us to make that decision, so.
They could, but they've asked us to, uh.
So I think you're right.
Reply.
We have a discussion with the planners and then go.
There's no big rush, but I think we ought to go, uh, reply.
No.
But yes, we agree that they have this but.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, Sheriff, I'm sorry, you got a little off there. Go ahead.
No, no, I, I, I'm always learning every day and listening to you guys talk. I, I learn, so thank you. Um, first of all, uh, we've had some meetings lately with a lot of our sheriff staff. And there was a, there was a common thread that was said, uh, unplanned, but it was repeated. Is the appreciation for the county and the commission for the support of the sheriff's office. And there are some that have spouses that are throughout the county, and the spouses are telling our folks that, uh, that they are seeing. Such good with, uh, commissions, because as you guys could tell right now, uh, the wage, uh, thing is, is a problem. But what they're hearing is they're not saying anything like, oh, they're gonna give us whatever. What they are saying is it's nice to hear. To see that the commission cares about its employees. So I just want you to know, our staff are recognizing, that's not us telling them to recognize it. They're just, they're just saying, hey, we're hearing these things and. So I want to make sure you guys hear that.
Good to know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, this is a little bit of a squirrel, it's probably outside of my wheelhouse, but, uh. I, uh, went out of town, uh, last week, uh, on vacation and some of it a reunion. I used to live in Missouri for four years. And, uh, went and saw some old working friends, went to school there, was a marshal there, uh, and I was coming. I, I flew to Oklahoma where my wife's from, saw their family, and as I was driving through, I saw Port of Catusa.
Catusa.
Catusa, and then it said Tulsa Ports of Catusa. And I thought, huh, so I started going through their website. I thought, oh, so I made a few phone calls. And, uh, we could talk more about this later because of the interest of time. It was fascinating when they developed these ports. And again, this is probably outside my wheelhouse, but that's worth sharing because I know what we're trying to do.
So, is this an inland port?
Yes, it's off a river too. Yes, it's off a river too.
Oh, so they do have a river there?
They have rivers there. And it's also part inland port. And and so when we were talking, I says, what makes this so successful? They opened up free property to trucking companies.
Free property?
To bring their businesses there. To help with the port and they brought in schools. Academies or certification where people taught others to drive trucks in those trade agencies. That were prevalent to the, the port industry there. How cool is that? So I just thought I'd pass it on.
That's neat.
But I mean, hundreds and hundreds of acres, but they had this much. And so what they did is they sold their other businesses' land. Transferred and got the land for free, but they paid a small fee that contributed to the infrastructure.
Oh.
Just thought I'd show.
That's smart, yeah.
Very smart.
Good idea.
Brought in a lot of people.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh.
I like your Franklin Daily Planner you've got.
Yes, and also it keeps my hand from burning when I'm drinking cocoa, so just. Staffing, uh, continues to, uh, uh, keep increasing as you guys, uh, probably remember that there's been a lot of signatures for contracts. So people pay their two years. We have, uh, surpassed the, the, the minimum requirement to have our own academy through Weber State. And so, uh, if everything follows through, if the course that we're on, we could ideally be fully staffed on the correction side by the end of the year.
Congratulations.
So, but but this is, again, this is attributed to you guys for supporting us and getting these individuals in here. And we're getting, yes, we're getting nineteen-year-olds. They're not a fully functioning corrections officer like, you know, carrying a firearm. But they're doing just about everything but that, and we're seeing a huge increase, uh, for nineteen-year-olds. And the thing is, is that. I wanna start my career early. So it's nice to hear.
That's good to know.
I wanna give you a report on that. And then, uh. We got a.
So are these kids going through post?
They will be, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, that's really good, yeah. You're developing, now what you're developing is new talent. And that, I mean, it's great.
Yeah.
The other thing that, uh, what our recruiters are doing that's actually brilliant is we allow, uh, correction assistant positions. Uh, they can hire on at eighteen years old. So some of them are starting for six months, eight months as a corrections assistant. And then, so they get close to that nineteen, they're gonna apply and then go to the academy. So we're starting them younger, so it's awesome. Now, this, uh, is a bid, uh, and a drop of what our mobile, uh, drone. Uh, unit would look like, so I wanted you guys to see this. You can take my phone, so you might have to expand it. But it shows you the van and then the, the top one, the back doors. Yeah, it's a mobile nest.
Mobile, it's mobile, huh?
So the back door is open. And it has a screen, so if you have a command center, the people can watch from the outside. Now, the inside is an office for three people and three pilots.
Three people or three pilots.
And or three, yes.
Yeah. This is super cool.
And the, the thing we like about mobile is right now we're struggling with the line of sight fly because you can't fly remotely. Right now because of, uh, federal restrictions. We might be getting around that with some things, some legit getting around it. But for example, if, if it can be Ogden, it can be North Ogden, it could be anybody that we serve, if they wanna do a, a certain. Event of like, we're getting a lot of, uh, vehicle thefts in a certain area, so we take this out and we put it out in the area. And once the guys are out there working, if somebody flees or they see some activity, they throw the drone up, the drone's already hovering. We've already, you've seen some of the video we've been doing now. We've got some more that's just amazing and, and, uh, but awesome. Um, you know flock system? The cameras.
The what?
Flock, the cameras that were, yes, that are like the street signs.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, so we, uh, we're, we're gonna be doing a report here pretty soon. We've got two stolen vehicles. And each time we busted the person in with the vehicle.
Well, kid, that's cool.
It's gonna be a great report.
Wow.
Yes.
How fast do these drones fly now? How many miles an hour?
Uh, we're seeing them thirty to forty, but it, it depends, and there's range issues too. So maybe they go fast, quick. But really, they're designed for our purposes to be in an area to watch. We can get there. And we can track because the, the also, the cool thing about some of our drones is, yeah, we can pace, but the camera can zoom. Like, uh, you guys probably don't know.
It fixes on an object.
Yes, so.
But if a guy gets out on the freeway here, then it kinda gets a little.
We can get away, but we can follow them. So we, we launched a drone yesterday from our office. Some guys were testing it. And the one camera, we could zoom all the way from our office to the North Ogden Divide. We could tell you exactly what car was going up and down the divide.
Are you kidding?
Really? That's some of our search and rescue drones. It's amazing.
That's crock and fantastic. We know that, we know that you could see from outer space. Years ago, I was, anyway. Uh, we did travel for a company that had camera technology that could see from outer space. I'd see a guy, what he was writing on a paper.
Yeah.
In a park.
Really?
That's how good the technology was thirty years ago.
Wow.
So it's just, it's just, now getting it to the drone is just fan, it's just phenomenal.
Yeah, it's very impressive. In fact, this company that's given us the bid wants to drive out one of their demos and show us. And we will make sure when they come out that you get, you get an invite.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
Okay, uh, two more things. Uh, has that company reached out on Kiesel to look through it?
No. This was the week.
This is the right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I figured I'd call him tomorrow or the next day.
Okay, um, Judge, uh, Neater, Neider. Uh, she's our liaison with Sheriff's Office. She came out to my office today and asked us about work release. And so I told them what we're going through, what we're working on with the commissioners and so, and, and so they, they have a concern. That we don't have a couple of things. One is work release because they wanna go back to work release, especially for DUIs and other small offenses. And then the other thing is, is that they want to, wanna know, we're having bandwidth issues. So the judge is, when bandwidth meaning, uh, video court. So when COVID came, we've transitioned a lot to video court and it's been successful. But what's happened is during this transition, and I'll be candid with you, I think some of the attorneys, the prosecutors, not our county. Other counties, because we're all using, uh, uh, our inmates for other courts, is they were quite candidly, they were baby. They got what they wanted. And so now the video court is gaining a lot more momentum, so when they don't get what they want right now. They've threatened to go to the judge to order a show cause on me. Sheriff Sparks and the other sheriffs on the Wasatch Front, why are we not delivering inmates in front of the judge? So luckily Judge Dorita, who's the presiding judge and sort of has gotten in the middle of this and told everybody to hold on. So they're still not having everybody come over to the courts because of COVID, so that jams us up. We've been able to modify it with video court, but we don't have the space or the bandwidth, uh, and the staffing to accommodate that. But we're getting better at it. But the problem is too, is it's not, it's a lot of times people will blame the sheriff or will blame the court, excuse me, the jail and all that. Problem is, is they work nine to five. We work twenty-four seven. I suggested night court. I said, I'll bring in Harold T. Stone if we need to, you know, and, and. Remember the TV show Night Court? I said, let's do night court. I mean, it's, it's really about bandwidth and staffing, but a lot of times because the courts are already backed up, their calendars are bigger. They think, oh, we'll just do video court now. It's just not what they think it's working.
So when you talk about bandwidth, are you talking specifically electronic bandwidth?
We're, uh, in this term, I'm talking everything including.
Oh, you're talking about everything.
Everything.
Glad you brought that. Yeah, well, the reason I question, if you've got the capacity to haul them over recording back all the time. This should cut the demand. This should make it easier for you.
It is, but, but what people are not talking about is, so you guys have had mayors come to you and say, why isn't the sheriff's office taking these inmates and that inmates? Or what they're not, what, what nobody's telling you in, in a wide array of, uh, type of discussion, is the courts are backed up. So when the court, the people are not getting heard and they're being held in my office, so it's jamming that up. And so we, yeah, we don't take as much as we used to. It's not just because of COVID. It's a number of things. And so we're not.
Just not one thing.
It's not, and it's, it's easy to say, well, it's the sheriff's office not holding, you know, allowing people into the jail. No, it's not. It's also when people are sentenced for a long time, the, the state prisons would not come to our office for weeks or months later. Because of COVID. So we're holding people that should have been ousted to free up room. I mean, there's, there's thirty or forty factors that come into why we're like.
So when that happens, and you have them, they're, they transition on that day from a county inmate to a state inmate, right?
Well, there are all state charges on that level, but it's the time when they're either pled guilty, found guilty. And then they're sentenced, and once they're sentenced to the prison, then they go down. But we always hold them.
Until they're sent.
Until they're adjudicated or till the process goes through, yes.
Well, that is my point though, when you say it takes them two or three weeks to get here, while we're holding them those two or three weeks, we're at that point being paid for. No? So even though they have been adjudicated and they've been, uh, until they pick them up, they're theirs, they're ours.
They're ours.
Well, there's another fine case that state's got us into.
Yeah. So our, our, our.
You gotta get a legislator to run a bill on that.
Yeah. I agree.
There.
Pick them up or start paying.
That's exactly right. Pick up or pay.
Yeah.
That's a good tagline, pick up or pay.
Pick up or pay, yeah. Yeah, there's no incentive for them to come up and get them.
That's the whole point. They can sit and just sit on it.
But remember our tour of the prison, there's what, down twenty-five percent?
Yeah, they had space.
They have space, but they don't have the man to watch them.
That's their problem. Pick up or pay.
Pick up and pay, I like that.
Um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Right.
Anything for me?
Oh, you know, we ought to get. Who's, well, uh, uh. What's his name? The realtor, well.
Who?
Uh, representative.
Oh, Cal Muslin.
Cal Muslin. He'll run that bill.
Yeah, Cal will do that in Harvey.
He just got successful on that one with halfway houses.
Yeah.
Expanded a cache in Utah County.
Yeah, we ought to have Cal run that bill.
He, I bet he'd do that a bit.
Yeah, you ought to talk to him about that, Sheriff.
Yeah, he's coming up. I think he's coming up to our awards for the legislators that we're having in, in a couple of weeks. You guys are invited to.
Pick up and pay.
Pick up or pay.
Yeah, he ought to come and run that bill for you.
Yeah, I'll bet. That's, that's probably an easy sell down there.
Yeah, I suspect that'd be an easy sell. That bill go through like that.
How many people do you think have in that category that would?
It just, it fluctuates. Sometimes, sometimes we're holding fifteen to thirty people. We got a couple of vans gotta come. Sometimes it's one, two.
I could make a little difference, but the idea would be the point, they need to pick, pick them up.
Yeah, well, yeah, there's no sending for them to get them or making arrangements with us to hold them.
Yeah, or start paying.
Yeah.
So for them, I could see it.
That's the point.
No room at the end, Harv.
No room at the end. So it goes.
Motel Six wouldn't go for that.
Well, you could, Tom Bodett would be the guy to talk to.
They'll leave the light on.
All right, Sheriff, anything else for him, you guys?
I'm good, thanks.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right.
Have a great day. Wake call tonight?
Wake call, yes, four thirty.
Four thirty.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
Don't you have another meeting at three thirty?
I'm just sitting here to look.
We got one right now.
Yeah, we got those guys out there waiting.
Yeah, I got affordable housing.
Yeah?
At three thirty. William George.
Yeah. Let's go.
Corlin, you're back. I just knew you'd come back. I just knew it.
Couldn't steal it.
Roger?
I sit in the corner, so I don't.
Oh, Roger. Hi, are you gonna be okay running that, uh, affordable housing deal? Okay, 'cause I'm, well, I'm in one and it's, we're running them long, so I won't be down there for twenty, thirty minutes. Okay. Great, all right, thanks. Bye.
Is this a?
Hold on, we wanna make a motion first.
Yeah, I make a motion that we, uh, adjourn our, or we just move into a closed meeting to discuss. Uh, personnel or, or, uh, real, real estate property or, or something to do with legal.
Okay, and I'll second that motion.
Does that include litigation?
Mm-hmm, litigation. I second that, all in favor of saying hi.
Hi.
Hi. All right, we're, uh, we're closing the meeting, going into a closed session, and we won't be back, everybody. Thank you. So. Let's see, I gotta. I'm gonna, I can get this thing to work.